Okay, I'd like to call this Cleveland Heights City Council meeting to order. It is Monday, February 3rd at 7:37. Eddie, would you call the roll?
Cobb.
Kuta.
Here.
Larson.
Here.
Maddox.
Here.
Russell.
Petrus.
Posh.
Here.
All right, Jim Petrus is excused. I do have one amendment to the agenda, and that is to remove ordinance 02325 from the agenda. Do I have a motion?
No, moved. Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, Eddie, would you call the roll?
Posh.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Maddox.
Aye.
Larson.
Yes.
Kuta.
Yes.
Cobb.
Aye.
All right, approval of the minutes, December 2nd and December 9th. Anybody have any additions, subtractions? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to communications from the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. So today is our sort of first opportunity to provide a little bit of information regarding some events, some pretty important events that have taken place in our community. So I'm going to start just by saying and sort of reiterating some of what I've already spoken about publicly related to the fire that occurred at the Cedarly Meadow Brook Project. I want to take a moment to again thank the fire service, both in the city of Cleveland Heights, specifically Chief Harry, Assistant Chief Preuer, Battalion Chief Keen, who was the incident commander on site at the fire. I also want to thank the numerous partners in neighboring communities that came to our aid. I'm not going to list all of them now, it's over 15 of them. We've thanked them already, but I just wanted to extend my thanks again and point out that it is in that spirit of regionalism that we come to other communities' aid and they come to ours in the event of these kinds of emergencies. And I think that it's important for us not just to be thankful, but to reflect on how much more powerful we all are when we engage in that kind of regional collaboration. Had a conversation today about being more regionally minded in our efforts, our activities, in our work. I know that many times elected officials can be frightened of regionalism, and in our small communities, relatively small communities, people can think that moving in the direction of a more regional approach can reduce our own authority, or sometimes with politicians, we'd be out of a job if, say, we merged with another city. But I want to take a moment and just reflect that, you know, in the interest of the region at large and the people who live here, I for one am fully on board with cities merging, including this one with other cities as a personal matter, no matter what the impact, positive or negative, it might be on a career in politics for me. And so I just wanted to point that out, that not only is this something that we have to be thankful for, for firefighters, and really all of the people who came together to make that as much of a success as it could be, and that means our Public Works and Parks and Rec staff, our police who assisted, for the first time, using a police drone to assist firefighters in pinpointing hotspots through the use of that drone. This is something that worked out really well, and the fact that the fire did not spread to neighboring buildings, residential neighborhood, and was confined only to that building, in my view, was a success. And just, I know that there's going to be some more information given about this in a sec. I did want to say that we are steadily moving forward with the investigation. The Ohio Fire Marshal has become involved as well in the investigation, and again, I am hoping that we wrap that up as quickly as possible so that we can move on to clearing that slate through demolition and don't have a longstanding eyesore in that location and begin the process of rebuilding as quickly as possible. And then, the day after this fire, we started hearing informal reports of a raid on a local business, Solantro Taqueria, over on Euclid Heights Boulevard in the Coventry Village Business District. And in response to that, I wrote what people are probably used to from me, a long, some might say rambling if they're being insulting, speech address about this. And I scrapped it, and I think that it's just going to be important to say in this moment something very simple. And that is simply that here in Cleveland Heights, all our welcome is always aspirational because not all of us feel that way all of the time, but in this city, that is something that we are constantly seeking and striving to live up to. And although I don't know the details of what happened at Solantro Taqueria, we have not received any official information from the federal government either before or after, and we have also not received any official information from the business, I do want to say that no matter what the specific circumstances of that incident were, that here in Cleveland Heights, we respect the dignity and the right to exist of every resident, worker, visitor, in our city. Every single one of us has value, and we should never forget that. We should never treat people like they're pests to be removed. So I want to say that at the outset, and I want to speak to the involvement at the local level at any operation like this and what we're seeing across the country. Here in Cleveland Heights, many may not remember this, I introduced some legislation a while back when I was a council member, that, and this was during the administration before the previous administration, so the first administration of our current president. The legislation addressed some of the issues that we're seeing now in certain ways. That legislation was not acted on by this council, not these members of this council, but at the time, I don't know who all was on the council at that time, I don't remember, but that legislation was introduced and mostly ignored. But in this case, I think there was some positive result, at least moving toward where we need to be as a society, in that we have administrative policy in place that would ensure that we here in Cleveland Heights do not detain any individual for any length of time for a civil immigration law violation. In our view and in the view of legal minds, that is a Fourth Amendment violation. We do not, we make sure to enforce the will of judges when they sign warrants, but a warrant not signed by a judge following that is a Fourth Amendment violation. And so I want to ensure the people that, in Cleveland Heights, we do not engage in the enforcement of federal civil immigration law. That is, at this point, a policy at the administrative level because we were not successful at moving that forward through the legislative process. And I just want to point out that here in Cleveland Heights, we've got a great deal of local problems that we prioritize. As we know, just from the beginning of this year, we've got a scourge of illegal guns in our community and in Ohio generally because the state has seen fit to make it a little bit easier for people to engage in the kind of trafficking of guns that we don't want to see in our communities. Focusing on violent crime, focusing on the crimes that actually impact our neighbors, holding people accountable and investigating those criminal acts is what our priority is here in Cleveland Heights. In local law enforcement, we have no role in civil immigration enforcement. Immigration is a federal, not a local issue, and it would be completely irresponsible of us to prioritize that over the sometimes very serious crimes that are committed in our community. But I did want to take a moment to point out that this is not, absolutely not, at least in its purest form, this is not a Republican or a Democratic issue, this is not a right or a left thing. This is an American issue. We began this experiment with the recognition that sometimes governments reach beyond their grasp and infringe upon the rights of the people, and so in this moment, I wanted to remind people of their Fourth and Fifth Amendment rights, the rights to be free from unreasonable search and seizure, and the right to remain silent and avoid incriminating yourself in any way. I want to remind people of that. Now, I'm not an attorney, and so I'm not going to give you legal advice, but I'm going to urge you to reach out to the ACLU, American Civil Liberties Union, as an example, or the National Immigration Law Center for more information, more specific information that may address some of the issues that you're concerned about, if you are concerned about this. If you need more specific legal assistance, I urge you to reach out to an immigration attorney. If you have financial issues that may not allow that or may not make that feasible, the Legal Aid Society of Greater Cleveland is a great place to start as well. And when I say that this is not a right or left issue, this is not a Democratic or Republican thing, I just want to point out, you know, no matter where you are on the political spectrum, we all have a touchstone example of government overreach, whether it's Ruby Ridge standoff in Idaho or the MOVE massacre in Philadelphia, we can all point to some place, some incident where people use the power of the state, which can be a massive power, to infringe upon the rights of the people. And this should never happen in America, should never happen to anyone worldwide, but, you know, in America, we have enumerated certain rights, and we can all point to governments infringing on those rights. And so I want to make it clear that this is not only our right, but it's our responsibility to educate ourselves on what our actual requirements are under the law and under the Constitution when it comes to search and seizure, when it comes to your right to remain silent, and empower both yourself and the people around you who may not be so empowered with that education, with that information, so that if there is a government agency who is seeking to infringe upon a person's rights, either you or through your influence, they can protect themselves against that overreach. So I would like to yield back, thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's move on to the city administrators' report.
Good evening. Mr. President, you emailed me quite early this morning, but you asked me a few questions, and I'll answer them as best I can with as much of a timetable. The first, the sound and lighting equipment is currently in route. We're working on a storage solution while there's a little bit of construction going on at Kane Park. Hopefully, April-May timeline for installation, I think it's for the Cleveland Institute of Art graduation by May 10th. Don't hold me to the exact date, but we're going to be moving pretty quickly on that. The Coventry Garage pre-construction meeting is this week. Once that's over, I'll have a little bit better of a timetable on the completion for that. The Suri Garage, there was more work that was discovered in December, which I think this council approved, more funds, looks like an April completion for that garage. It's really, at this particular point, on the Cedarly Garage, engineers meeting with the building commissioner this week. I can't say what date it's going to be open again, just because there is that, you know, the fire investigation is going on. Once we get a little bit more certainty around demolition or anything else that needs to go on, I can probably give you a little bit better of a date that that happens. The last, the IT, the cameras are here. We're working with an engineering firm, and the goofy thing about this, or the tricky part, there are a number of telecoms on those poles. They all need to be contacted in the best spot on those poles, so we're working with an engineering firm and FES, and they usually have about a three-month turnaround, but the cameras are here, they're ready to be up, it's just finding the right spot to do all those things. It's more of an engineering question than I can answer, but hopefully have a better answer the next few months about what a timetable would look like. But they're kind of ready to go, it's just where it goes on the pole which makes a big difference. And I think that was all the questions, unless you-
All I have, if anybody else has any.
Okay, thank you, have a good evening. No, I'm just kidding. If there's anything else, I'll follow up with anything else, a lot of those other things that you had asked about, like what's pending, some of that is obviously budget-driven, about what we can go and where's that, but those are the updates on those, and when I get a specific date on any of these, I'll forward along to council. Okay?
Very good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. By the way, that was Dan Horgan, I didn't even say his name, I just said "the city administrator", he is Dan Horgan. Okay, so next we have departmental reports. I don't think we have any tonight. Report from the clerk of council.
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report. Well, public comment, we got a few?
Yes, although we don't have any on legislative items, so they're all-
Okay, so let's let her rip. Wait, but actually, before you call, so you'll have three minutes, the clock is up there, I don't know if you guys, some of you guys have not seen that. Just say your name and your, you don't have to say your address, but maybe just what street you live on, and try to stick to the three minutes.
Sharon.
Hi, my name is Sharon, and I live on Lacona in the Noble 8 district. I wanted to address something that I heard on the last council meeting. While I don't always attend the council meetings in person because I work and I take care of my mom with Alzheimer's, I do occasionally get the opportunity to watch the recordings of the previous meeting. After watching January's meeting and listening to the backlash received on the execution of Affordable Housing Project compared to the fight and backlash of Dr. Martin Luther King received for his efforts in the fight of fair and affordable housing, I felt compelled to find a sitter for my mom to come to this meeting to explain why this was met with such opposition. I feel that our position on this matter is misunderstood and misrepresented. I am one of the low-income people who bought a home in Cleveland Heights 30 years ago. I lived in East Cleveland and watched the neighborhood go down. I wanted better for my children, so I worked three jobs to get, to be able to afford a down payment to move to the city of Cleveland Heights. And I beamed with pride and self-worth and a sense of accomplishment as I met that goal. When I first moved on my street, everyone was a homeowner. Over time, for various reasons, people moved out, death or they lost their homes. Those homes were subsequently turned into rental properties. This resulted in revolving door of people moving in and out of properties, not keeping the property up, not respecting other people's properties. While Noble Road has not been maintained, businesses moved out, crimes increased, and the area no longer felt like a safe community. I do not, I have not seen any attempt to revitalize this area with sustainable housing or businesses. No one is objecting to the affordable housing going up on Noble Road, but it's the kind of affordable housing that's going up on Noble Road. Affordable rental properties does not lend itself to potential, for the potential of sustainability, nor does it become attractive to sustainable businesses wanting to move in. Our community, Cleveland and other communities, Cleveland included, see the importance of building sustainable, affordable housing that will allow low-income individuals and families the opportunity to become homeowners and to feel the pride of accomplishment of homeownership. Building low-income rental housing in an already economically deprived that lacks diversity in that area does not exactly lend itself to the ideal of sustainability or fulfilling the American dream of homeownership. Since it was referenced to Dr. Martin Luther King on the last meeting, let me reference it again. When Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. spoke about Black Americans being systematically denied access to quality housing, he was primarily referring to the practice of racial discrimination in the housing market, which prevented them from buying homes in desirable neighborhoods and effectively limiting their ability to build wealth and homeownership. Essentially, he was highlighting the issues of unequal access to quality housing due to racial barriers and not the quality of the house itself. Dr. Martin Luther King believed that homeownership was a key part of racial justice and economic equity. He fought for, he fought to end housing discrimination and to create a society where everyone had the opportunity to own a home. He fought to end housing discrimination, I'm sorry, and where everyone was allowed to buy a home, had the opportunity.
Sharon-
So to compare one, I know, I just have one little second. So to compare oneself and actions in this matter is unparalleled to the actions and fight of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s dream. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. And Eddie, I would, I would like you to, did you leave your email address with, on the form? Well, I would like to contact you because we do have a down payment assistance program that is going to be rolled out for new homeowners and so forth.
But not for you.
Well, no, it'll be, it'll be in, oh, no, I'm not, I'm not saying for you necessarily, but I just want you to know what the city is doing for, you know, homeownership. So if you want to leave your contact info, we'd be glad to let you know that.
Melody Joy Hart.
Melody Joy Hart, Monmouth Road. I'm just coming tonight, I'll be very brief, to talk about Lee Road, and the businesses there are suffering, particularly after the fire, and of course, winter didn't help either, but I would like to encourage council to allocate some funds to help them during this time because it is affecting their business with the burned-out structure and a lack of parking as well, even maybe providing valet parking or anything that you could do to help these businesses, because we don't want them to close down and have a lot of empty places. It's an important business district, it's considered like the downtown of Cleveland Heights, and it's important we keep them vibrant. So I hope that you will consider doing that, and for all those who are residents who hear this, please go visit them, eat there, drink there, buy stuff there, and help them out. Thank you.
Thomas Smith.
Hi, I'm Thomas Smith, I live on Overlook. Yeah, I'm a little bit tall, sorry about that. I'm going to keep it short and brief. I'm here to address what happened on Coventry, and I'm sure most of you are aware of what happened on Coventry, and I'm really happy to hear the comments that you made on that. I think that the next step would be, I would want to hear some conversations about how the police is going to vocally say that they are not going to be contributing to helping ICE. And additionally, I want to ensure that our students and our school districts are safe. I'm here because I'm concerned about our community. I love my neighbors, I love my family numbers, and I love my friends. And I don't think that whatever they do up there should affect what we do down here because you are my community and I love you all. Yeah, that's basically my short little statement, but thank you.
Thank you, Thomas.
Fiona? Sorry, I can't read the last name, my apologies.
Hi, I'm Fiona Finneran, Westwood. I'd like to reiterate what my friend Thomas said. I would like to demand a reexamination of the human resources policy from 2019 that was mentioned earlier, and ensure that it prohibits collaboration and coordination with the local Cleveland Heights Police Department and ICE. Also emphasizing that the chief of police specifically enforces that with his employees in terms of collaborating and coordinating with ICE. Also, creating and enforcing policy that makes sure that Cleveland Heights school districts are safe from ICE raids. There have been informal reports of ICE ratings across school districts in America. And creating a plan that ensures that teachers know what to do if that happens. And that's what I have to say, thank you so much.
Thank you, Fiona. Melody? Melody, did you happen to bring any of those papers with the, you know, the kind of do's and don'ts?
Oh, no, but I will bring them to your neck of the woods or drop them off.
Well, that's basically what Fiona just referenced, that people don't have that information, and that one pager was really-
So I'm at melody, M-Melody-J-O-Y-Hart@gmail, you can email me and I will send you the information.
Okay, thank you.
Barry Kuzmicus? I'm sorry if I pronounced that wrong.
So I'm not a resident of your community, I just want to put that little gift here, I'll explain in a minute, but I'm here on behalf of a resident of your community, and both of us, in our career, we've known each other for 35 years, have provided support to members of your community that are folks with disabilities that we've worked with over the years. And I'm here because, as, I'm a friend of Mr. Russell, and a mutual friend of ours sent me a copy of a flyer that I thought was very reprehensible, and have questioned why it hasn't been condemned publicly by anybody here. And I wanted to speak on behalf of someone who, again, we've sat on opposite ends of negotiating tables, she's labor, I'm management, until we both retired and moved on and still do stuff. She rose through the ranks of union all the way to the state. I brought this as a little gift she brought to me, even though we were adversaries. From a trip she went to in Brazil when Mayor Jane Campbell sent her there to speak at a national, international governor's convention. She's an accomplished author, she's done all these things in her life and in her career, and it's disparaging and hurtful when you see someone poke fun, maybe, perhaps, at someone for the way they speak. And I was just watching the news, the mayor of Philadelphia was speaking about the tragedy there, it sounds just like her. So, you know, I don't know why folks have to go there, but evidently someone did here, and I thought it would be, they attacked like six of you in this flyer, and I'd love to see somebody speak to it and just give it the condemnation and the dignity that the mayor spoke of earlier. So that was it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Matt Shadrack, I'm on Hampstead. My first time coming to this, so I apologize if I do anything out of order. Obviously, I represent a lot of people who are very, very, very passionate about what happened at Solantro, and we don't want to see that sort of thing happen here again. Obviously, there is a limit to the things we can do, but we have to think about what we can do. And one of the things, I'm so glad to have actually seen, a gentleman right there has actually shown us the ordinance that was proposed in 2019. Something like that being put back up on the roll would be great so that we can ensure that, please, 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 let's not have the police working with ICE because our citizens and our, and the people that exist here deserve dignity and deserve to be protected as much as we possibly can. Obviously, there's a lot of sadness going on right now in the community, a lot of people love that place, love the people there. I can't think of anything that is more important at this moment than to think about what we are doing in the face of something that is reprehensible and evil. So to reiterate, just as everybody has already said, please, let's make sure that we're directing the police not to comply with ICE, not to provide addresses, not to provide names. We're making sure that the police chief is part of that, and I know we have to go to a board meeting tomorrow because it's the, the schools are a different subject, it's not subject here, but that's another thing that people are really here, are passionate about and trying to prevent, is that we don't want to see ICE coming to our schools, and anything that we can do to prevent that would be appreciated. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mayor.
I apologize. Emily Gavillier.
Thank you, Mayor.
I apologize.
Hello, my name is Emily, I live on Bernard. I just want to thank Mayor Soren for his comments about, you know, a lot of us are here about ICE specifically. And I want to thank you for your comments about the humanity of our neighbors. I really appreciate that. I hope that the city council feels the same, that we are all in agreement that our neighbors are not to be deported and that we will do anything in our power. And hopefully, you feel the same, that, that we will not comply with ICE, that we will give information about how to not comply with ICE, and that we will do our best, maybe anyone on the city council who is in contact with people on the school board, who could maybe further information on how the school board can also not comply with ICE. Our neighbors do not deserve to be treated this way and we should use the democratic means that we have at the current moment. Thank you all for listening.
Thank you.
Drew Hertzig, Bradford Road, Cleveland Heights, Mr. Mayor, councilors, as many others tonight, I'm asking the city council to make the strongest statement possible about the safety of all residents in Cleveland Heights. And as the mayor referenced, you already have a immigration policy procedure through your administration from the human rights, I'm sorry, Human Resources Department from 2019. I would like the council to reexamine that, to update it as possible, as necessary, since it's already on the books, I'm sure it's been legally vetted, but if it needs another round, that would be okay too. And then bring it forward in the strongest style possible, whether that would be a resolution or ordinance, to make it the strongest statement as the council can possibly make about the safety of all Cleveland Heights residents. This is the time to step forward and do that. Since enough people are quoting Martin Luther King, I would like to remember, remind you of his statement, "In the end, we will remember not the words of our enemies, but the silence of our friends." This is not the time to stay silent on this issue. And again, whether it's a resolution or an ordinance, the strongest form legally possible to the city council to declare all residents of Cleveland Heights safe would be much appreciated. Also, the city on its website could provide the information that Melody Hart and others are sharing with residents. There's no need for them to have to do the legwork when you've got a city website where you could put that information up there. So that's another suggestion I would make. So again, strongest statement possible from the Cleveland Heights Council, using the policy that's already on the books, but put it out there because of research on the city website doesn't find any of this, does not find this kind of thing. So you need to put it out there where people can see it so that they know that you are on their side. This is the time to speak up, to do everything you can to make sure. A welcoming city has to be a safe city and we are far from that. Even though we wish to get there, we need you to move us along. Thank you very much.
William Baumgartner.
Hello, my name is William Baumgartner, I live at 36 Morningson Lane. I've been a resident of Cleveland Heights since 1963, so a little bit of a time here. I was going to speak a little about why we need to do something or say something about the Trump administration's mass deportation policy, but that's already been covered. So I'm just going to move on quickly from why to what. And I think what, what we need to do is, what I propose would be a resolution that makes four points. Number one, oppose the Trump administration's illegal and probably unconstitutional mass deportation program. Secondly, express support for birthright citizenship, as stated in the 14th Amendment to the Constitution, in which, as we all know, President Trump has unilaterally tried to revoke. Third, reaffirm support for DACA, the Deferred Action for Childhood Arrivals Program, which was instituted by President Obama. And since the Obama era, the people known as Dreamers, who have been working and, and playing by the rules under, under the DACA program, with the idea of eventually getting a pathway to citizenship. And I don't know whether Trump has gotten around yet to trying to do that end, but I'm sure he'll get to it. And finally, I would like to see you guys direct all departments of the city, including the Cleveland Heights Police Department, not to cooperate with ICE or any other federal agency in carrying out Trump's mass deportation policy. Thank you.
Moshe Koval.
My name is Moshe Koval, I live on Coventry. And I just wanted to reiterate everything that's already been said. Thank you, Mayor, for making those statements. And I just wanted to request that council take this policy and introduce or pass it into law, that the Cleveland Heights Police Department won't help ICE and won't, they don't have a requirement by law to contribute anything to, to helping ICE or to helping with deportations. So I just want to make sure that we can make that a law and maybe we can make a statement to that effect so that the citizens of Cleveland know, so that they're not scared of calling the police if they need to. And that's, that's, yeah, that's all I just wanted to add to that. Thank you.
Good evening, Tanya Palmer, Neelview Road. I, I'm actually glad I came to the meeting. It showed me that we can be concerned about more than just frivolous things. And I just wanted to come up and say that things of the past are just that. We can do nothing about things that have already passed. We can do something about the momentum that we set now, moving forward. And I would love to see our mayor and our council come together and truly collaborate and be in unity, as our dear councilwoman has said, in love. Unconditional agape love, no judgment, no your own thinking of your own selfish feelings, but as a unit. Because until we come into a place where we understand that we need each other, we will not thrive. We will fail. And I would like to speak to the fact of the building that's being built on Noble, in the Neelview area. It wasn't that we didn't want something built, Mayor. We wanted something that would bring vibrance to the area. We have over 64, as we said over and over and over and over again, buildings. I'm an owner of one of the buildings and my building is a low-income building. You're adding low income to what's already there. I've been there for over 48 years myself. Most of the residents who are homeowners, they're elderly people, they're on fixed incomes already. That would have been beautiful to see that built at the top of the hill, where Pick and Pay used to be. When I was a teenager, I worked there. It's been sitting there, desolate, empty, for years and it's more than enough room to build this building. And it's a more lively area where you can help someone of low income. You adding more people into a desolate place already is not the answer, as I said before, and I stand on that. But I would love to see us come together as residents and be able to speak to you and speak to you all more than three minutes so that we can truly have a avenue to move forward. The internet is not the answer. Half of the people who are elderly, they don't know how to use the internet. It's a great idea for the modern age, for new folk, but what about the people who are the roots of this community? Those are the elderly people. They are the roots. And the last I checked, the head cannot live without the roots. You need the roots in order for the body to stand. So I just wanted to put that out there. We need to come up with an avenue where we can come together and collaborate in love so that we can move forward.
Hello, nice to see some familiar faces in a place I've never been. Even though I am an organizer for the last 20 years...
Where do you live?
And I live on Wood Road, next to where I grew up, attended Cleveland Heights, Cleveland Public Schools, Cleveland Heights Public Schools. So I have deep roots here. And I'm here to repeat what a lot of folks have said tonight. I believe our policy shows us who we are. And so I'm hearing that we have practices, that we have hopes or dreams or values, but they're not into policy. And so I think our community is rising up, I'm watching it. And we are here to support you to pass good legislation that will state specifically that our police will not cooperate with ICE. And that's important because the number one reason for immigrants to be arrested is actually traffic violations. And so if we don't, you know, capture them into the system here locally first, ICE cannot get to them. But we need that in policy and we're all here tonight to support you to put that into policy, into writing, and make this a community that I grew up in, that I learned about and I'm so proud of, in writing. So thank you.
CJ Nash.
CJ Nash, Vandemar Street. I just want to say I agree with everything that everyone is saying here as far as our immigrant population and ICE and everything. I'm very glad the camera isn't going because I was going to ask him to please shut it off. I do have some hesitation. When we put things in a resolution, normally I'd be, yeah, go for it. But with the administration that we have in the federal and the state legislature right now, we would create, I, I worry that we would create a target. There are ways that we can support and help our immigrant population, which we need, without putting a bigger target on their back. Because if there's one thing that this particular administration loves is a fight. And when they see that news report, that's wonderful for the internet, it sounds great, they love throwing that stuff around. Is that going to heighten the target on our immigrant population? That worries me. We can help our immigrant population without blowing a big thing of fireworks up and say, hey, come over here and target us because we're a news story, come and get our immigrants, come and take them because we're in the news and we're telling everybody that we're going to put our foot down, we're going to fight you. We can help our immigrant population without putting a target on their back. Just think about that when we consider whether we're going to make resolutions or something. Is it going to help us on the internet or politically or get time on TV? Or is it going to help protect our immigrant population? Just think about the immigrant population in this situation is the most important and it's much more important than us getting FaceTime on TV or on the internet. We have to help our immigrant population. That's number one. Please think about that. That's all.
Okay, was there anybody who wanted to speak that we ran out of paper? Was that you? Okay. Thank you. Sorry about that, you know. If you could just say who you are and your address.
I'm Cynthia Reed, and I am not a resident of Cleveland Heights, but I grew up in the area. I'm here today to address the flyer because it was dehumanizing, for one. And I just want to say for those that do feel targeted or marginalized by it, I just want you to know that you are not alone. I'm quite sure that the residents of Cleveland Heights is behind you. Okay. And to those who may be responsible for, I don't know if they're president or not, but the actions are unacceptable, they are hurtful, they are divisive, and they are not welcome in the community of Cleveland Heights. I'm quite sure everyone agrees with that. But I'm here on behalf of Councilwoman Davida Russell. I worked under Davida Russell. She is a humanitarian. Every organization that she is associated with is about helping people. So I don't understand why she was even included. I don't understand why any of you, but I only know one of you. Why she was depicted in that and to make fun of developmental disabled children, a school bus, which she drives for 40-plus years. It's just unacceptable. It is unacceptable. And I just want to say that I know for a fact that Mr. Davida does everything in her power to help her community, not only Cleveland Heights, but communities throughout the United States, I can say, because she has been in the presence of presidents, governors, senators, and people of that stature. So I just wanted to come and speak on her behalf, on her behalf. And I also want to say that with this flyer, though, whoever did it didn't think it all the way through because I grew up with Barbie dolls and they have always been beautiful to me. So that's all I want to say.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I saw a little bit of this. Is there, I saw. Did anybody else want to, okay, go ahead. And is that it, just this gentleman? Okay, very good. Oh, and... Well, we can only do one, but go, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, I'm Tom James, Mayfield Road. I just wanted to reiterate something that was said earlier. You know, I thank you for all the sentiments shared, that, you know, all of the residents, regardless of immigration status, deserve humanity. But sentiments are not the same as action and I would really like to reiterate that, you know, that is strong action, taking, a stance being taken that, you know, police will not cooperate with ICE.
Hello, my name is Julia Bisette. I live on Hampstead Road. I have been a resident of Cleveland Heights for 15 years now, which is the longest I've lived anywhere. I do consider this home. I love Cleveland Heights deeply and I think that our diversity is one of our greatest strengths. I'm here to reiterate a lot of what's already been said regarding ICE and Trump's very unethical, immoral, and probably illegal mass deportation policy, which is also looking like it will lead to sending people to Guantanamo Bay, probably to be incarcerated and tortured without legal representation. The consequences for this are very, very real. So I would like to also reiterate that I think it would be helpful to see in writing that we are going to be a sanctuary city for people that are immigrants, that people will feel safe here and that they, I would love to see it in writing, that the police will not be cooperating with ICE. Mayor Soren, you said yourself that this is a federal issue, this is not a local issue. We have no obligation to cooperate with them and we should not be. What they're doing is completely unethical and will harm many, many families. Thank you.
And let me thank you all for coming out. You know, this, we always hear very thoughtful and caring people come to the microphone and, and this is the time when Cleveland Heights really shines, when there's adversity and, you know, the people are willing to come here and stand up. And you're always welcome to do that. We're going to move on to legislation now. I'm sure that if you want to stick around, I think some of the council people will have something to say in our remarks that come right after legislation. This should not take too long. We're going to do first readings for consideration for adoption. So Addie, take it away.
I have Resolution Number 017-2025 on first reading, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a contract or contracts to accept a grant from the Western Reserve Area Agency on Aging to fund the provision of transportation services through the Office on Aging and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Soren.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next, I have Resolution Number 018-2025 on first reading, a resolution appointing Robert N. Brown as a member of the City Planning Commission of the City of Cleveland Heights, Ohio, to fill the vacancy for the remainder of an unexpired term ending December 31st, 2027, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Councilmember Cobb.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Motion passes.
Next, I have Resolution Number 019-2025 on first reading. A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a two-month extension of an agreement with Millennium Strategies LLC for continued grant writing services and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Saren.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next, I have Ordinance Number 020-2025 on first reading. An ordinance authorizing and approving the presentation of entertainment programs in Kane Park for the year 2025 and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Saren.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. That motion passes. First readings only.
I have Ordinance Number 021-2025 on first reading. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a real estate purchase agreement for the sale of certain real property located consisting of approximately 1.049 acres of vacant land on Lake O'Shire Road and identified as permanent parcel numbers and 685-110-04, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Saren.
So moved.
Nope, we're not voting on that one.
It's forced to happen, right?
Next, I have Ordinance Number 022-2025 on first reading. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to take all actions necessary to apply for and accept one or more Northeast Ohio Public Energy Council 2025 Energize Community Grants and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Saren.
All right. Next, we have committee reports. Who would like to go first? Councilman Posh?
Well, I do need to get some of my notes together about the, our past safety committee meeting. But I'd like to address some of the folks that are in the audience. I'd like the safety committee. Tony?
You have to excuse yourself.
Switching things up, I may be. Drop like flies. I'd like the safety committee to take up the issue of safety around our immigrants. And I think this is something that we can have an initial conversation about, see what's appropriate, see what's not appropriate, and move from there. I'm not familiar with the legislation that was presented to council a number of months ago, probably a couple of years ago. But let's, let's, let's see what it involves. It's an important issue. The other issue regarding the safety committee, we talked about a series of things. We talked about speed table data. I think you can look at the meeting minutes to get that data. We talked about the Shaker Listening Project. We also talked about a public hearing we're going to have about animal safety and the deer population, just so we can learn a little bit more about that and consider legislation in that regard. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilwoman Larson.
Thank you. Reporting from the Finance Committee, council has not received the requested revised 2025 budget book, October, November, and December financial statements, end-of-year actual balances, and 2025 revised capital budget. The Archer Compensation Study results we received from Mayor Saren this evening. So thank you for those, Mayor Saren. 2025 carryover capital projects from 2024 we have not received. Clarification of the city's cash position, unfilled positions salary total versus actual salary expenditures and unbudgeted 2025 expenses. This is an attachment that you can find in my, the Finance Committee's meeting for February 6. Council did agree at the January 22 Finance Committee meeting that completion of the 2023 financial audit will not realistically be available until March. So the audit results are not a factor in our work to approve a 2025 12-month budget. I will continue asking for the audit results until they're provided to council. Finance Committee meets this Thursday, February 6, at 6:00 p.m. Mayor and his staff have been invited to attend the meeting. Then the other committee that I chair is the Municipal Services and Environmental Sustainability Committee will meet February 20 at 5:00 p.m. The Climate and Environmental Sustainability Committee, Citizens Committee, and the Transportation Mobility Citizens Committee will be reporting their 2024 actions and proposed initiatives for 2025. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Larson. Anyone else? Committee report? No. All right. I'll just give a slight one from planning and development. We will be having a meeting tomorrow morning at 10:30 a.m. This will be with all of the businesses on Taylor Road. Anything else? Oh.
Councilman Cobb? Oh, where, where are we?
Committee reports.
Yeah.
All business. Yeah, we're, no more. We're done with committee reports.
Oh, okay. Old business. Who's got some old business? I have one little quick one. Anybody else? Okay. So Tanya Palmer brought up the meeting with council members and perhaps the mayor. I know we brought this up, or I brought it up, at least a couple of meetings. I was thinking maybe we should commit to something, maybe quarterly at least, you know, where we either right before a council meeting or right after. We have some time with residents who want to stick around and talk to us individually. Any thoughts on that?
I'm open.
Sure.
All right. So I'll tell you what. Why don't we do this at the next, just to make sure we'll check with the law director to make sure that if we're having individual conversations, that that's okay. I'm not asking you today, but I, you know, probably will ask you. And then why don't we pick a date at the committee of the whole on the 18th where we can, you know, do that. And we'll just try to figure out a good way to do that. Because we really love to spend some one-on-one time with any of you that would like to speak with us. Any new business? Okay, no new business. Then Councilmember comments. Councilwoman Larson.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the mayor for keeping council updated on the fire and how it was progressing and how it was finally kept under control. I appreciated that information very much. I'd also like to say that the cilantro employees who were arrested, brought home, my concerns about what was going to happen with this administration at the federal level. I'm very concerned for the future of our workers and our neighbors, my neighbors. I'd also like, what I will say is, I will do what I can during this dangerous moment in our city's history to make sure that people's rights are respected and that they're treated as human beings. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Maddox?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few things tonight. I'll start up and work my way down just based on some of the statements I'll make. So I want to shout out Ella Cassandra Maddox. That's my momma today. It's her birthday, and so happy birthday to her. She happens to be one of my favorite Cleveland Heights residents, and so I'm going to see her on my way out here.
She better be.
So I wanted, right. So I wanted to knock that out. And the second thing, I kind of merged these two together. Well, shout out to the Fire Department, all of our city services for the amazing work that they did, as well as for the mayor's timely updates on that. I know there was a lot going on in the city. And so I wanted to shout them out for that. Now, it, you guys know how I am. It's Black History Month. And we're starting this month off seeing ridiculousness come down from the White House. I want to give you a quote from Malcolm X tonight, and then I'll move on from this. It says this, "Power in defense of freedom is greater than power in behalf of tyranny or oppression." Because power, real power, comes from our conviction, which produces action, uncompromising action. Here's what I want to say about this tonight. The reason I'm not concerned about what's happening in the White House is because everything they're doing is coming out of ego, pride, racism, and confusion. We're coming out of passion and a love for our community and our people. So if it is a fight that the White House wants, it's a fight they're going to get. We're not going to sit on the sidelines and watch those who cannot stand up for themselves be beaten down when we have the energy, the ability, and the voice to do so. So shout out to everyone under the sound of my voice that spoke up tonight because you've also made yourself a target to some people. And that shows tremendous courage to stand here and speak truth to power, to talk about not just policies, but what could possibly happen impacting people that maybe aren't even connected to you in your neighborhoods. This is the Cleveland Heights that I know and love. And I promise you, I know that there's going to be a target. There's going to be pressure. There's going to be attacks. But bring it on. This is how change happens. We need to remind them that at the end of the day, you may be in the White House, but we still hold the power. And sometimes it takes situations like this to remind us who the hell we are. And so I want to tell this community to stand up, rise up, use your voice, use your vote, hold us all accountable, support your leaders, your elected officials who are fighting and pushing back, who are standing in the gap for people and the marginalized people in our communities. I want to commend you. I watched this city continue to rise up over the last week. I wanted to kick over my laptop half the time and go out here and march and just do something. There isn't a block I haven't driven by. There isn't a street I haven't gone by where someone isn't holding a sign, knocking on a door, or making it clear that something is happening in this city that should not be. And so I want you to know, not only are you standing up for the people in Cleveland Heights, but you are standing up for every person in this country. You're standing up for the other communities that maybe are feeling, are pulling back out of fear, are confusion, are not quite sure what to do. Cleveland Heights is showing that we will continue to lead, will continue to love, and will continue to embrace justice on behalf of all people. So thank you for what you're doing. Let's get it. Let's go. Let's take this fight.
Anybody else? Oh, there you go.
Yes. I want to say to all the people who were hurt and were taken out of our city, I truly understand. Because most people heard me say, or have heard me say many times, that Cleveland Heights was a home of grassroots for us because we ran for racism in Collinwood area. And that's how we became Cleveland Heights residents. And I understand the plight and the safety and the net that you're looking for to be protected in this community. And I am with you 100%. But as Anthony Maddox, Councilman Maddox, said, you know, things are happening around this country that we have to really, really take a sharp lookout at. And we have to get up off of our chairs and we have to really talk to each other to what's going on. Because guess what? Buckle up. This is just the beginning. We're about to go for a ride of our lives. And if we don't start protecting, looking, I don't care if you like each other or not. That doesn't matter to me. I don't care if you like each other or not. Sometime I don't like my husband, and I've been with him for 45 years. But that does not stop me from loving him, taking care of him, looking out for him, going to bat for him. That does not stop that. And as a community, we must continue to do that all the time. All the time. Stand up for each other. And I want to, I want to say Barry Kosmikis, and I want to say this publicly. I did not know he was coming here today. And I actually wrote a note to Tony. And I said, "The man in the back room was the former Human Resource Director for the County Board of Developmental Disability. But for him to come from Strongsville just to speak up on my behalf was impressive to me." That mean, that was a relationship of care, of respect, and someone who really knew who I am and know who I am. And I respect that, and I appreciate that. I also respect the other people who spoke up on my behalf. It means an awful lot. Because, you know, when people don't really know you, they assume they know you. And it's easy to put out rumors. It's easy to create a narrative. It's easy for people to say what they want to say about you, and they don't know nothing about you. They have no idea the work you've done, where you've been, what your passion is, how you've gotten, where you've gotten. And all, you know, as used to say, my mother say, walk a mile in my shoes. Walk a mile in my shoes. Cleveland Heights, I want you to walk a mile in your shoes to protect each and every person in Cleveland Heights. And I want to thank all the Fire Department, all of labor who has been taking care of the fire. And the blessings goes out to all of the businesses on Lee Road that need our help. So please support each other, our community. It's time for us to start loving each other and take away all of this hate. Thank you. Oh, oh, oh. I've got one more thing I forgot.
Always one more.
Yes. I want to give acknowledgement. We lost a Cleveland Heights resident who was 100 years old. She was, and I looked it up. She was the second oldest person in Cleveland Heights. The first person who passed away in Cleveland Heights, Ms. Lessey Brown, was 104. And she died in 2019. And I had the privilege of asking our Congresswoman, our county executive, and our county executive council to send resolutions and things to her funeral on behalf of her living in Cleveland Heights on behalf of her living in Cleveland Heights over 50 years and living to be 100 years old as the second living, longest living person in Cleveland Heights. And I thought it was something that I needed to address. I was able to send a loving letter on behalf of myself to the funeral. But I just wanted to say to the Congresswoman and all of the elected officials out there who sent resolutions, thank you so very much. That made the family so very happy.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice President. Anybody else? All right. I don't know. You know, whenever you see kids playing and stuff when they're young, a lot of times they want to be firemen, you know, fire, you know, work for the Fire Department. And, you know, it's a dangerous job. There's no question about that. I, you know, and I played that out that Friday night. I was at Cozumel, my wife, eating dinner. We got there before the fire started, saw the fire engines go by, didn't know they, they were stopping right across the street, pretty much. And, you know, there they are pumping 60,000 gallons of water a minute to try to keep that fire down in 17, at that moment at least, 17-degree weather. I'm assuming it got a little colder because they fought that, that fire for almost 24 hours. So I just cannot say, and having all those communities, as the mayor was saying, join us in that effort was a wonderful thing. The whole thing with ICE, it's, uh, it is disturbing. I, on a human level, you know, you can't imagine what it would be like to be, you know, working somewhere, and all of a sudden somebody busts in. And, you know, you, you just, it's run for your lifetime. On the constitutional level, you know, there's... I mean, I'm a former government teacher, and we're all... When you're, when you teach government, you just never, ever leave it. You know, even though I'm retired, you just, you just don't, and I have not. Article 1, Section 9, Clause 3, no ex post facto laws. That means no retroactive laws. It's not only in the Constitution, but it's, it's in two different places in the Constitution, not just in Article 1, but it's, I believe in Article 4 as well, that the states cannot do that. And one of the reasons is, you know, President Biden had an asylum program. And because we can't get to all these people because we don't have enough judges and we don't have the personnel on the border, we've allowed them, or in his administration, we allowed them to come in and have work visas. Now another president comes in and says, "Oh, no, no, no. We're not going to do that." That, in essence, maybe, I don't know. You know, I mean, I haven't seen any constitutional, I mean, that's, sorry. I haven't seen a Supreme Court decision on this. But, but the spirit of it is you don't tell people it's okay to do something and then just tell them retroactively, "Oh, no, you, you can't do it." And that could be what's happening here. I don't know all the particulars on this, on this case, but I do know there are people here under a previous executive order, and this executive order was basically revoked. And the spirit of that, if it's, if it's not technically wrong, it certainly goes against the spirit of our Constitution. And I'm, I am very, very concerned about that. I understand the national security of our borders. I, I'm down with that, you know? But retroactively throwing people out of this country, I'm not, I'm not okay with. And lastly, on this topic, I just want to say, we're here because Congress and the presidents have not. They all told us. We had a broken immigration system, but nobody has fixed it. Okay? And that is partially, at least, why we're here today. On Black History Month, I just want to say this. I was watching the Grammys last night. Did anybody see the tribute to Quincy Jones? You know, who passed last year? I mean, that was just electrifying. You know, he worked with Sinatra, with Aretha. Obviously, Michael Jackson. He did the theme to Sanford and Son, which I could love that show. And We Are the World, which was getting all those people together to help people starving in Rwanda. I believe it was Rwanda. Famously said to all the people that participated, "Check your egos at the door." And I'm a musician. I know how musicians are. There's a lot of egos there that they did check to come together. I'm sorry, it was for Ethiopia, now that I'm just remembering. But what a wonderful thing this country did to step in and do that. And, you know, with all the six degrees of separation, I had a... I never met Quincy Jones, always would have loved to. But I went to Berklee College of Music, and before Berklee was Berklee, it was the Schillinger House. And Quincy, so I was there in the late '70s as a student. And there were still professors there who taught Quincy Jones. So I got to talk to people, and I would always ask them, "Tell me a Quincy Jones story." And one of my favorite stories was, you know, one of the things we did was we, we had ensembles, you know, seven or eight of us in small groups. And he would, this is a story that was told to me by one of his teachers, that he would always run in and go, "Hey, just, just two minutes, just two minutes. Just let me pass out this arrangement. I just want to hear these four bars." You know? And then they, they'd play it for him, and then he'd like go, "Okay, wait, wait, wait. Let me just change one note here." I mean, and that work ethic and just the passion he had, because I was a jazz comp and arranging major, you know, it just, it just made me want to work harder, you know? This was a guy who just contributed to so many people on so many levels. So I want to just recognize, Black History Month, Quincy Jones today. We got a lot going on this month, so we'll be back here. The next meeting is actually two weeks and one day from today because it's President's Day. So it'll be Tuesday, the 18th, and we'll see you then. Oh, and it was Ann Lewis English that passed. Okay.